One. Wow, look how quiet it gets. We are still waiting on one trustee, but we plan on moving ahead with this meeting, so we respect everyone's time. We're going to start with the invocation, and I will, because I sat up here and chatted and did not ask anybody, I will, if you'll join me in prayer, please. Dear Lord, please watch over everyone who helps with St. Pete College, all our students, all our faculty, everyone who makes us St. Pete proud, and who continues to help our students succeed, amen.
Amen.
And a flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This morning, we have no resolutions or retirements, but we do have a, we do have an introduction. Good morning.
Good morning. Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Law, it is my pleasure to introduce Allstate Campus's first associate provost. As you can see by the bio, Dr. Griffith actually has extensive student services experience, most recently served as an associate dean of University of, sorry, what? Of Student Services, of Student Success. And she actually comes from University of Tennessee, and so she is now joining us. Please welcome Dr. Tashika Griffith.
Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you all, I'm very excited to be here. I think it's a great time, a very exciting time, to be a part of the SPC family, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you and welcome. Moving on to comments, Board Chair, the only comment I have is, I was able to be part of the WOW luncheon, and as usual, I cried, because that's what you do at the WOW luncheon. And it's a fabulous opportunity, anybody who hasn't been, you probably should attend. And anybody who wants to sponsor a scholarship, write a check, you know, we take those too. So, anyway, moving on to our, the rest of our board, Mr. Mayor.
Well, thank you, and welcome, Dr. Griffith, to the Allstate Center. As mayor of the city of St. Petersburg, a long time ago, I had a great relationship with the Allstate Center and the training of police officers, and they're in the academy, and we had numerous classes with numerous hires that we put through that, so it seems like I was out there a lot. Plus, the partnership with the, with the city of St. Pete, it was, it's a community center, and it opens its doors to the city for numerous, numerous functions. So it also serves as a community center for all of St. Pete. So it's near and dear to my heart, and I know that it's in great hands, so, thank you.
Mr. Stone, say.
Sure. Good morning.
Good morning.
I just wanted to take a quick minute to thank the downtown campus for their hospitality. They were kind enough to allow me, the downtown St. Petersburg campus, I'll clarify, they were kind enough to allow me the time to come in and shadow and observe some of the advising and onboarding process at their campus, just so I could learn a little bit more about what that process looks like, how it works. And I'll say, I was extremely impressed, I was only there for two hours, and I'm sure they were thankful for that. But I was extremely impressed with the care with which those advisors approached those students, the insight, and really the, the questions that dig out more than just what the student is saying on the surface, really getting to hopefully the root of what they're hoping to accomplish at SPC and for their future. It was refreshing, and it was, I just wanted to, to let everyone know how special I think that is, that the students have access to a program like that, to people who are actually listening and care about what happens to them, and a group that's not just taking tuition checks and fees. So, thank you all, thank you to the downtown St. Pete campus, very, very good day.
Thank you. Madam Chairman, I have a couple of things, somebody going to fire up. First and foremost, there are three separate initiatives through the St. Pete College Model United Nations. The picture you see in the upper left was a Model United Nations, a two-hour simulated Model United Nations sessions with community middle and high school students. So that one, actually, I think that made one of, either our newsletter or something else, but I got a very nice note from the chancellor in recognition of that, so very proud of that. Along the way, you see two others, the St. Pete College Model United Nations team for the Florida Model UN, they, they went to Gainesville on October 21st and 22nd. The group won the following awards, the delegates representing Poland received the distinguished delegation award, the delegates representing Japan received honorable delegation award, and Morris Salak, representing Poland, received the outstanding position paper award. So three very nice pieces. And then earlier this week, I received a, an email from Professor Roy Slater, and he gave me the news that the St. Pete College Model UN team will return from the National Model United Nations Conference in Washington DC. They received the outstanding delegation award, which is the highest award presented by the Model UN. So that continues to be a great opportunity for our students to, to, along the way, you know, the, one of the things we've, one of, one of the things that, that is an indicator of, of success is when students can work on a project that is a semester or more in length, and the Model UN program does, does all of that, so we're very pleased. I have two other short notices, one is just to recognize that Dr. Kevin Gordon will, will be honored at the Omega Psi Phi fraternity on Sunday, November 13th. He is the Omega's Man of the Year Award, a very nice, where is Kevin? I saw him come in, there he is. Kevin, congratulations, good to see you, okay? And then lastly, Madam Chairman, I'd like to mention and recognize the work that went into, Jesse Carragio and his team put together the Moving the Needle Conference, which is now a national conference that we hold in St. Petersburg to, to focus on improved practices, using data to improve those practices. In 2016, there were 246 attendees, he had 17, count them, sponsors, people want to be part of this initiative. Forty-six different colleges and universities from 16 states, and a representative from Saudi Arabia, 15 of the 28 Florida College System colleges were represented, and 47 attendees had the title of president, vice president, vice chancellor, CIO, CLO, or provost. So, so it's very, very well received. I think Jesse, when I met with him earlier this week, he's already making plans for next year, and we will continue to do that. So congratulations to Jesse Carragio and his staff. Madam Chairman, that's all I have for now, thank you.
Well done. Kevin? Well done. Has everyone had an opportunity to review the board minutes from October 11? Any modifications? Do I have a second?
Second.
Having a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously. Moving on to our board attorney. It's always a good sign. General Counsel?
Good morning. Nothing to report today.
It's even better sign, when two lawyers can go without saying anything. You've got two up here that, that can't help ourselves. Moving on, career and academic pathways update, Dr. Cooper.
Good morning, Madam, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Law. Dr. Williams and I are here this morning to give you an update on our career and academic pathways. As you recall, we were one of 30 colleges chosen by the American Association of Community Colleges to participate in this initiative, and we'd like to begin with a video.
The Guided Pathways Initiative was an initiative put together to help students start on a path, to start smart and finish strong. St. Petersburg College became involved in the movement, we were offered to participate in the initiative and the AA-ACC pathways with the Melinda and Bill Gates Foundation.
St. Petersburg College had been one of 30 colleges to be invited to do this. I thought, this is fantastic, we're giving students a tool, we tell them, from a faculty's perspective, this is the best curriculum you can take, and this is the order you should take it in.
We put together a number of deans, faculty, and advisors, we've had a number of summer institutes in which we decided on what to put together to make the best path for student success.
For me, as a student, when I came over from high school, I was dead set on becoming a doctor, but then as I continued to go through the organic chemistry, it was just not something that I wanted to see myself doing for the next 20, 30 years. My advisor first introduced me to the guided pathways, she said, I understand your frustrations, I understand your confusion, and will put in your strengths and weaknesses, and really find out what would be a best suit for you in your career. I was able to see the different options that I could go in, you could see the salaries, and you can see the years of experience needed. I then realized that I didn't lose much time, the things that I took for biology were also able to roll over into the degree of the business program. Using guided pathways, it stopped me from doing something that I never really wanted to do, and put me on the path of success for my career.
I think students have a general idea what they want to do, but they need more focused help. I think more students are going to graduate quicker, I think more students are going to not retake as many classes, and if they want to try something else, it's probably one course that it has cost them, instead of a year of searching.
The process of guided pathways includes helping the student realize their career choice, working with advisors to get on a pathway which they've chosen based on their career, taking the necessary courses on the path, and then finishing strong, having all the necessary resources to surround them with the support they need in order to finish.
The initiatives we're already doing, such as college experience, Smart Start, and Early Alert, instead of us running off in several different directions, guided pathways pulls everything together.
It includes an opportunity for the advisors to help students understand the college experience model, that's working with the learning plans, and having the out-of-class support.
I think that the communities are possibly the missing piece to a lot of our curriculum. In each of the communities, we will have assigned advisors, librarians, business associates, and faculty, and I think having that entire team work together to support student success will be a game changer.
It's important for everyone at the college to jump on board, because it's a conversation that students need to hear college-wide. The best thing we can do is all support the initiative, continue to evolve the academic pathways, and promote the pathways to our current students and our new students.
Guided pathways would be something that I highly recommend to students who ask me how I started out in the biology program, how I ended up in the capstone class of the business department, and then how I ended up getting an internship at Raymond James. It's the best thing I think I could have done in an early stage in my life.
Thank you. So we have participated in three of the six institutes over the last year, there are three more to come that'll take place next year, and we began with institute number one, looking at, was the college ready for transformational leadership? And of course, we had already accomplished a number of items which I think demonstrated this, such as our gen ed reform, the college experiences with its six components, which provide students with all those wraparound support services, and then we were already involved in summer institutes where we had taken our curriculum, we had looked at how the courses matched up with the program in achieving the major learning outcomes, and we had already mapped down 183 academic pathways with embedded industry certifications. So we were in good shape as far as that was concerned. So we came away from institute number one with the idea, we needed to frame this, so it didn't just look like another initiative. And so we came up with the idea of career and academic communities for our students, so there are 10 of those, and within those 10, all of our programs are sousmied, and any of our AA transfer students and their plans for the future can be sousmied within those 10 career and academic communities as well. After institute number two, we came away from that with the idea that we really needed to engage our college-wide stakeholders to make sure that everyone was aware and had an understanding of what we were moving forward with, with the career and academic communities and the academic pathways. So as you can see here, we had a number of events started last summer, there were faculty dinners, there were open forums on the campuses, there were lunches through student support services. This was the theme for our fall faculty welcome back, as where, as well as our workforce connections program with our advisory committee members, and then our college day, and finally, the Moving the Needle Conference, which just took place. And so we are very pleased with the progress that we have made in communicating with our stakeholders throughout the college. After institute number three, this past October, we recognized that to broaden and to ensure that the students' experience was one that was integrated and not siloed, that we needed to add some leadership to the process. And so what we are in the process of doing is adding what we are calling a triad leadership team to each of the career and academic communities that were, are led by our deans, and this triad group will be made up of a faculty member, a learning support specialist, as well as a career and academic advisor. So we're drawing from the academic, as well as the student support side of the house, to ensure that the milestone activities, our communication to students, as well as the out-of-class experiences that we'll be providing those students with within the career and academic community, make sense, and are seen from the students' perspective as integrated and a part of the pathway that they're on. These 30 triad leadership teams, along with all of our deans, will make up what we're calling the Pathways Council. This council will meet monthly on all of the campuses, the meetings will be open to anyone who wants to see what's happening and hear as to what the career and academic communities, how they're progressing. We'll also give an opportunity for the triad leadership teams to share their thoughts and ideas, so they can benefit from one another, and this will continue the process of communication out to the college family. We also know that there are going to be technology needs as we progress and move forward with the career and academic communities, so we are going to institute a technology committee that will be co-chaired by Susan Cleric and our Zoran, and then we have the communication committee, because we've got to be able to communicate to the students, as well as to the college family, and then to the community. And Dr. Williams and some of her team members will be leading or co-chairing that particular committee. Dr. Williams?
An intricate part of institute number three was the ability for colleges to show that we have clarified the student paths that students go on, and that we help them choose and enter a path. So in front of you, you should have a copy of what the student services team does to get a student started. This is the work that happens behind the scenes to onboard new students, it is also the work that happens once they have actually enrolled, and what we do to help retain those students and keep them engaged into the college's mission, and what they're here to do. So you'll see things there such as application, what the process is, how financial aid embraces them, what admissions and records does. You'll also see underneath what we do in enrollment, how the advisor will be working with the triad teams on case managing students, and doing the necessary things to keep them moving towards their end goal. Within that process, behind some of those scenes, you'll find our new student orientation. And so this fall, we took an opportunity to contextualize our new student orientation by four of the career and academic communities. When we did that, immediately afterwards, we assessed the, the process, we checked with the students to see, how well did this work for you? And the students indicated that they were not ready at that time to actually be in a community, they still wanted to see some of the other communities. And so we are not going to contextualize to one community and throw a student into the health community because they said that's what they want, and find out later, I really wanted psychology, or something else. So we will now go to all 10 communities and work with students on career choices and options there, we'll have initiatives and programs within the orientation, and we will also have faculty visits to the class as well. And then finally, there's still some work to be done, and so we have some phases that the student services team will be doing in conjunction with the triads, going on for the next six months. So this graph shows you exactly what we're going to be working on, it shows you what the goal is, and it shows you the training that's going to be needed that we plan to do going forward. So we are doing this very intentionally and very strategically to ensure that our students have a strong start and a strong finish.
Number of other things that we're working on are looking at contextualized activities within our particular gen ed courses, and that is where, say for example, it's a math class in statistics, and they might look at various health-related examples for those students who are going into the health field. Or they might look at various psychological research, and what does a correlation mean as far as, does, do these two factors really have a cause-effect relationship, or is it just a relation in regards to the numbers? We have two faculty members, Carol Weideman and Nick Manis, who have been doing this in their courses already, and we do have other faculty that are already doing this. But we would like to kind of frame that for those who haven't thought about doing it in their gen ed courses. So they provided an all-college-day seminar, as well as a webinar, and now they're creating an online course for any other faculty member who would like to look at how to contextualize activities within their gen ed courses. We also know it's important for our students to complete their comp, college-level course, as well as math, within their first year, if at all possible. With the dev ed reform, some of those procedures fell by the wayside, and so now we've circled back around, and we want to ensure that our students get off to a good start by having their comp one course within their first six credit hours, because many of their other courses require, have a writing requirement, and they're more likely to be successful if they've had their comp one first, and then complete their comp two within their first 24 attempted college-level credits. In mathematics, while we know that students may have been out of school for a while and may not be up on their math, so we want to give them at least a first semester, so we are asking for them to then start their math college-level credit course within their first 15 semester hours, and then to take the math courses that are part of their academic pathway sequentially, so that they build on those skills, and they don't take one and then drop out, you know, not take math for two semesters and then try to come back to it. They are not successful when they do that. So we are setting those procedures in place for next fall, and, and know that it will make a difference in regards to our students' completion and success. Any questions?
Any questions from the board?
Thank you.
Thank you. Enrollment strategy. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Law. Joining me this morning, I have Dr. Rebecca Ludwig, who's our dean of our College of Health Science, and will be presenting this, the third piece of the enrollment plan with you this morning. So if you remember, we were back here a few months ago in September, and at that point, we talked about student retention progression efforts. Last month we came, we talked about enrollment strategies for new students, and to this morning, we have the third piece of the plan, which is ensuring the best program offerings for students. So to kind of frame the issue, these are some of the problem statements that have to do with our look from the program perspective. We have too many students in undecided or general education, associates of arts areas, you heard that referenced in the prior presentation, about half of the students are kind of in this undecided area, about the other half of students are actually in organized transfer plans as they're progressing onto the universities. Ideally, we want to move more and more students over into that direction. Some of our current programs have fewer than 20 graduates, the current number for 15, 16 is 18, that excludes those that are on teach-out. We have students in good academic standing who have stopped out, that number currently stands about 2,500 students. When we go back the last two years, and we look at our retention from fall to spring, there's about 2,500 students in good academic standing who have no issues with financial aid, who we lose as an institution. About 30% come back at some point later on in the future. And then we have a backlog of students who seek limited access programs, number for fall stands at 2,835. To give you an idea of capacity, we have about 1,800 total slots available for Allied House students in the limited access programs, and of course, many of those students have those slots as they're progressing through. So this is our plan, to ensure the best program mix, we've broken it down into three elements. The first one is to refresh, revitalize, or retire programs if need be, we'll look at the assessment process that we currently go to, to assess viability, we want to maximize existing enrollment opportunities, and we're going to share some of the work that the deans have done in terms of action plans, and then finally, grow enrollment through new program offerings. So we're going to look at some of the new programs we've had, beginning last summer, going through some of the plans for this coming spring. So the first area of assessment I want to focus on is called our Academic Program Viability Reports. This is a model that we do for every program every year. We look at about 10 measures, we'll quickly go through what those 10 measures are, but it's really a, a complete look at the viability of a program on a regular basis. Those, we have program-specific meetings, those meetings include deans, chairs in the programs, some faculty, as long, as well as staff from academic effectiveness and workforce. They meet, they go through program trend information, so they're going to look at data from the last three years, they ultimately create an action plan. They begin by reviewing the previous year's action plan, and updating what occurred in the last year, and then focusing on those data metrics and looking at what they're going to do in the upcoming year. There's the 10 measures, you see they cover anything from a general enrollment measures, they look at some of the success rates in, on, in that particular program, they look at outcome measures such as graduates, number of internships, certificates, some of the Perkins information, and then they're looking at enrollment trend information, so they're looking at forecasting data to get a sense, is this how viable is this program going forward, how many jobs are going to occur as we go forward in the, in the next few years. This is the reporting cycle, we're actually right in the middle of it as we speak. It starts in September, where the program administrators get together and review their plans from last year, and provide updates and follow-up reports. We have the individual meetings that occur, began in October and accrue through November, December we'll be completing those reports, and then we'll provide those to leadership in January. Another element of our viability process is to focus on a more elaborate, we call it the CAPR, or Comprehensive Academic Program Review, where the viability one we do every year has about 10 metrics, this one has about 44 metrics. So in this particular model, we're going to do a much more in-depth, 360-degree perspective look of the individual programs. After the, the teams meet, the dean actually provides a prospectus on their program, so they look at what's happened in the past, what they're currently working on, and what their future plans are. This information is shared with their workforce advisory boards, and they ultimately put together a PowerPoint and then show that information with the Academic Affairs Council on that, on that four-year rotation. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Ludwig, who's going to share some of the plans by the programs.
Thank you, Dr. Carragio, Madam Chair, board members, Dr. Law. I'm going to focus on what we're working on to try to maximize enrollment in our current programs. To begin with, we're, in the College of Health Sciences, we're trying to get very creative because clinical space is our greatest limiting factor. So we're looking at altering clinical schedules to include evenings and weekends, so that we can accommodate more students. For example, in radiography, by doing that type of schedule, we were able to increase from 18 to 22 students. Now that may not sound like a lot, but for that program, that's a 20% increase. In respiratory care, we just completed a growth plan that was approved by their creditors, and we've had so much luck with placing these students and employment upon graduation, that as soon as we finish our self-study and site visit next year for re-accreditation, we're going to request another growth plan. So we think we have opportunities to increase enrollment there. In our BAS programs for Health Services Administration and Dental Hygiene, we have opened up a few courses that students may take before they're formally accepted into the program if they wish to do so. This is helping make a more seamless transition from the AS degree into the Bachelor This is helping make a more seamless transition from the AS degree into the bachelor's degree by giving them an opportunity to get their feet wet and get going while we're waiting for them to finish up that program. We also are auto-accepting all the AS graduates now into baccalaureate programs. So they receive a letter inviting them to enroll, and it's a much more streamlined, convenient process. Again, we think we're going to snag more enrollment through that process. And with respect to our AS and dental hygiene, moving to the BAS dental hygiene, we're the only online degree completion program in the state of Florida right now for bachelors in dental hygiene. So we're looking at reaching out to the program directors of the other AS programs in the state and auto-accepting their students as well. All they have to do is fill out the application, and they're automatically guaranteed a position in that program. In the College of Education, they have two new certificates, one in preschool specialization. And the first offering of that yielded 35 completions. They also have infant and toddler specialization, and that one garnered 11 completers on the first offering. These students are also auto-gradated into the AS program, and they work very closely with the outreach specialists, so that when students are accepted into that AS program, they immediately receive information from faculty to help them with their My Learning Plan and to provide the advising they need to move forward. The state of Florida has also helped us out a little bit. They removed some prerequisite courses to move from an AS in early childhood education into the bachelor's program. They also made a third prerequisite, a co-rec. This enables the students to move forward without any barriers, so there's no lost time between finishing one degree and moving into the next. Also, legislators this year increased the Teach Scholarship funding from $3 million to $10 million. This is open to our students and will benefit these childcare workers tremendously, because this funding will pay for stipends, tuition, living expenses, and it will also apply to any of the programs in early childhood education. So it could be a certificate, an AS, or a bachelor's degree. In the College of Business, they're looking at their hospitality program. It's been narrowly focused on hotel and restaurant management, and now they're exploring other options for their students to increase interest, such as event planning. This program has also been mostly 16-week courses, so they're now moving towards more eight-week-type courses and online courses to facilitate completion of that program in a much more timely manner and more convenient for the students. In the College of Computer and Information Technology, they are researching ONET and Burning Glass to identify what programming languages are the most popular at this time. Once they identify how they might improve and strengthen those programs that they offer, they will go through and look at their outcomes and update those, modify their courses, and of course, move all of those through the quality matters process. They have an opportunity, they believe, to start a new program, an AS in web development, so that's also something that's on their horizon. And finally, in the College of Natural Sciences, they are making concerted effort to make sure students know what courses are available going forward, so they're planning them out now six semesters in advance, so that this will help the students plan their academic pathway. They also are going to start a student chapter of the Tampa Bay Association of Environmental Professionals. The students will offer a seminar, and on February 8th and 9th of next year, they're going to focus on a seminar that will lead the Certification in Stormwater Management Inspector. The following day, on the 10th, they're going to have a Muddy Waters Partnership with the Florida Department of Environmental Protection. And this will focus on managing stormwater, erosion, and water filtration. These events will not only be available to our students, but open to the public as well. And finally, I know this is a really busy slide, but you have a printout in your packet. I wanted to give you some sense of what the College of Health Natural Sciences is doing to look ahead and consider all the factors that affect expansion and implementation of their long-term goals.
Dr. Craggio?
Thank you, Dr. Ludwig. Thanks for that kind of sampling overview of a lot of the work that we're doing on our individual programs. And then the final component is actually to grow enrollment through new programming offerings. So to start with, you can see we have a couple of AS degrees. We have biotechnology laboratory technology, which we started this past summer. Fall enrollment, we have 44 students in that program. Our second associate's in science was biomedical engineering technology. That actually started this fall, and our initial cohort of enrollment students is 46. You can see the associates in arts transfer. So we've actually created 26 new transfer plans. So before, we were talking about those associates in science degrees that were more general. These are specific pathways for students onto the university. 20 of those 26 are in the area of the FUSE program directly to the University of South Florida, both St. Pete and Tampa campuses. You can see the variety of certificates, programming certificates we've started in the summer, a few certificates we've started in the fall, one at the Music and Industry Recording Arts Program for audio technology, one business for supply chain. You can see the PSAB program we've talked about before that started this past summer. We had about 28 of 36 slots, I believe, in that program. We'll be starting, well, next cohort will be this summer. As that builds up, that'll be offered more often. Advanced Technical Certificate, which is a post-AS program. We're going to be starting this spring in health data management. And you're familiar with the Arts Entertainment Technology proposal that we have at the state. We've made our first round of edits, and it's in the review process currently in the state office. Any questions we can answer for you?
What are we retiring?
At this point, we don't have any that are scheduled to retire, but through that process, I'm sure there'll be recommendations that'll come out. So the viability process that we'll go through, that'll go to leadership in January, and then we'll begin a review of those programs. And things like the number of graduates will be one of the things that we'll look at.
Obviously, we just want to protect any students that are in there.
Absolutely. I mean, we actually have teach-out processes, so when we do make the hard decision to close a program for various reasons, if we don't see, you know, there's not jobs to support for those graduates, we make that tough decision, then we do a teach-out model to support both the faculty and the students during the transition.
With regard to the Teach scholarships, are we reaching out, other than the students that we have on campus now, are we reaching out to any of the existing childcare facilities? Dr. Craggio?
We are. We have made all the childcare facilities in town aware, distributed by the county and the public.
Wonderful.
Any additional questions?
I just have a couple. This is a great analysis, and I'm glad that we continue to look into the numbers like this. It's just a good practice on an ongoing basis, right? So thank you both.
Thank you.
On one of the first slides, you talked about students that are stopping out, even though they're in good academic standing. And then we also talked about the number of undecideds, that they're not sure what they want to do, where they want to go. What's the reason for both of those? And as far as the undecideds are concerned, are we pretty comparable with other state colleges as far as what percentage of students that is?
So let me start with the last question you had. I think that we're not comparable. I think we're on the high end. So I think we're doing a lot of really good work as part of the Pathways Project to create those pathways. I think you're going to find a number of institutions in Florida that are still using the more broad AA general category.
Sure.
Where we're very focused on programs. So our buildup is to move the students away from those undecided general areas on just prescriptive pathways onto the university. I anticipate that, I mean, you saw, we already have 26 more this fall.
Right.
I anticipate exponentially that'll continue to grow as we continue to build our partnership with the University of South Florida. Certainly, as we've gone to the campuses and met with students as part of our campus forums, they want more and more. You know, they want, well, mine's not on there, when's mine going to be ready? And we've even had conversations about, well, where's my pathway onto a master's program? And where's my pathway onto FSU or UCF? And we're working on those. In terms of the students that we lose, what we believe the case is, is life issues. Our students have a number of life issues. So while, you know, we often think about some of them not being academically prepared, a lot of times, they are academically prepared and they're not performing well because of life issues intervening, and the choice of coming to college often being the fifth or sixth priority as opposed to the first, in many cases, for a traditional student. So in this case, we have students who are performing well. I mean, they're all in good academic standing. There's no issues of financial aid, and we're losing them. And as I mentioned, as we look at them over time, about 30% are returning, but they're returning down the road. What we need to do is continue to work on these pathways, continue to work on these support systems, and help the students and prevent that loss. But I do hear similar numbers for students, for other institutions that are able to get at that data. I am noticing similar numbers in terms of the percentage of students that are losing during that timeframe.
Are we actually reaching out to them?
Yes, we do communicate out with those students.
Picking up the phone and saying, hey?
Yeah. The hard part is, once they're gone, it's much harder to make a connection than it is while they're here. So we need to figure out how to more proactively intervene with those students.
May I make a comment?
Oh, sure.
One thing that I personally do is, every semester, any student who is unsuccessful in a course in my college, I call them on the phone. And if they don't answer, I leave a message, just checking on you, wonder how it's going, anything we can do to be helpful. And I do think that that's been effective, because I'll get a lot of return calls.
That's a great idea.
Is that 2,500 group, that sort of the ones that get away from us, didn't we send those students pre-printed registration forms this year? Wasn't that the group who, we sent something to them, said, here's a semester, here's a course listing for the spring semester. All you need to do is follow up, and we've already started sort of getting to them in ways that help them see there's a way forward here. I think Dr. Craggio is probably right with life issues. The first time we saw it, though, we were pretty concerned that there were students who were in the lim, waiting to get into the limited access programs, and we probably hadn't given them enough other alternatives. If they, once they realize they're not going to make it, then they lose heart. They may still be doing okay, but I...
It's about 500 of the 2,500 are in that realm. So they're in that AS in health science. Again, we believe the pathways are going to be beneficial, because instead of them walking in saying, I'm going to be a nurse, that's the only reason I'm here, we're now challenging the students to say, okay, what's your first choice? What's your second choice? What's your third choice? So they can explore options, and if one door closes, there's still doors open and they can progress through.
It takes a 3.75 to get into the nursing program now. So you could be a really good student and think you're going to make it, and then you get up against the wall, and you're 3.3, 3.4, you're not going to be in the nursing program. So we're working very hard to give them alternative suggestions as to how they might succeed and what they might want to do.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Before you leave, I had a question.
Sure.
I was looking at, a great report, and I know that we're going to be successful in Measures of academic effectiveness, there were 10 measures, and the three that really struck me, internships, employment trends, and placement. And with Dr. Law, and I think some of you were there at the governor's meeting in Orlando, there was a big presentation on internships and the importance of internships. And I'm just sold that that is a material benefit to our students in the offerings. Do we have a program or an advisor in each one of these disciplines to match a student with an internship opportunity, with a corporate partner, that, to where they know coming in that I do XYZ, and I can have an opportunity to intern, to be mentored, to get a job? Because also, job, employment, job placement was also a measure. Do we have that specifically?
We do have a program here at the college. We don't have individual advisors per program, though the faculty are very involved, depending on the specific program, in terms of working with the students. But we actually have credit classes that are part of that internship. So literally, near the end of your program, you're going to take this credit class, and it is the internship. And our college works with the individual employers and talks about what the learning outcomes will be for that student as they progress through there. One of the things that I think that sets us apart as a community college is the fact that we have so many students participating in internships, and now we're expanding apprenticeships. You know, that's really the kind of the new dialogue, is how do we get them even more embedded? How do we get students more embedded within the industry? But when we initially put the FUSE program together, that's what USF was very excited about, is that we were giving them students, yes, with their first two years done, but our students at first two years are going to be set apart from their students after their native students in two years, because our students are going to have work experience. And with the pathways, it's not going to be just the internships at the back end, but literally shadowing opportunities for their students as they move forward, shadowing opportunities in simulation. So when they make it to the internship, it's not the first time they're doing the hands-on work. We've actually provided authentic learning opportunities through the entire program.
How hard is it to get me a report where, I'd love to see...
We know.
I mean, don't create work, but, I mean, just at some point, show me your corporate partners and just kind of that pathway of a student to an internship. I'd love to see that data that we use. I'm real interested to see if we can help expand that as well.
We have real numbers on that. We'll share the numbers with you.
Great. Thank you.
Madam Chair, this is a follow-up. Bill, Foster was right. That governor's conference did emphasize that. But I also saw one thing at that conference that I think you take it a step further, was a lack of exposure for certain students, because when they begin to talk about HBCUs, they talked about how they gear down and they provided a certain approach for certain students to be successful. And so I'd also like to see, and I know we're doing the internship stuff, to what level, I couldn't tell you exactly, but I think that's vitally important. But I think for students in midtown and Tarpin and other, where we see students that come from urban areas, all of our campuses, really, they're also exposed to our international programs, getting, being able to see other countries and other things. Lack of exposure, and that's where this internship thing really helps develop, but also the lack of exposure. When you see something on a test and you've never been there before, you've never been outside of the country, you've never been to another city outside of your state, and that is a lack of exposure. And a lot of our students are suffering from that. So I'd like to see that taken a step further, if we can make sure that we not only have those programs for internships, but that we seek corporate partners to help students get exposed to more, be broader, so that they understand the things that they see on these comprehensive tests and standardized tests.
Didn't we just, we, as I recall from the budget, we just expanded our international travel?
$200,000 worth of support for students.
But I think, I think that's a fabulous idea of actually, when we are talking about going and doing our travel, that we actually go down and market it more in those, in those communities. I think that's a great idea, because you're absolutely right.
Or even have some program, Madam Chair, that speaks to students who finish internships, right, in their areas of study. And if we're going to those countries, you know, in our international programs, then those are the students that get the first opportunity to go. Because they finished an internship, let's say in finance, and they want to go to Germany, right? And what's happening with the UK and that kind of stuff, and Germany is the, Germany is the leader in terms of economics, when you talk about Europe. So, I mean, just so that we have some, we need to, you know, just figure out how we can integrate more students into those programs. Definitely internships, but also exposing them to more things that are related to their fields and maybe seeing how other folks do things as well.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Jeanette, you're up. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Board Members, and Dr. Law. This morning, I have a very brief report on our monthly report for October 31st. So first, taking a look at our revenue. Our student tuition is at $31.5 million. Year-over-year change is about a 2% decline. We did, this does include for October about six days of our registration for spring. Next, our state appropriations are coming in as expected. I mentioned this before, but our lottery will start coming in in about February, so we'll start to see about five payments of equal value in February. And then our total revenue at $58.1 million... And then our total revenue at $58.1 million, and it's about a 1% change of year-over-year. Next, looking at our expenditures, our personnel at $38.7 million. Last month, I had presented to you that we had three pay periods in September. We now had our three pay periods of October, so looking at the year-over-year comparison is more of an apples-to-apple comparison. Our current expenses at about $9.6 million. Capital at a little over $900,000. And then our total operating expenditures at $49.2 million. This leaves our revenue over expense at about $8.9 million.
Madam Chair, would you go back to that slide for a second?
Sure.
Madam Chairman, if, I just want to compliment the staff. If you look at the year-to-date, we are below last year's year-to-date in almost every category. We are managing the personnel side, which is 80 million bucks worth. I think we're managing that as well. You see the health insurance is up a little bit, we knew that, we made a choice to bump that one very slightly. But I, I'm pretty proud of the way we are managing our resources to get them in the right place and not too much, not too little, so.
This concludes my presentation on the financial report.
Any questions? Any questions? Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Law. My name is Brian Miles, and this morning I'll be providing you overview information of our three-year financial report, a copy of which you will find in your board materials. It's also being displayed as we speak. As we've discussed with you over the last few months, the college is experiencing certain financial pressures. Some of these pressures include an enrollment decline, increased costs related to health insurance, and also increased costs related to student tuition waivers. This three-year plan is a proactive response to these financial pressures. It sets forth a strategy and some tactics on how to adjust for these pressures. It makes projections and recommendations. Now, I will mention that this plan is in draft form. It's being provided for your review and consideration. What we would like to do is have you review the plan before our December workshop. And although the December workshop agenda has not yet been prepared, we would like to propose discussing the plan in greater detail with you at that time, engaging in an interactive discussion to go through some of the specific topics. Jeanette and Amy Lockhart, our Associate Vice President of Financial and Business Services, will walk you through the topics of the plan momentarily. If, as you go through this plan, you see anything that requires further detail, please let me know. If you see any items that we missed, please let me know that as well. We'll continue to work on this as we think of things and we'll be back in touch with you, hopefully in December at the workshop, to engage in more robust discussion. Jeanette?
Thank you, Brian. So first, as Brian mentioned, I just wanted to highlight a few sections within the plan. First one, I wanted to, realigning the budget, back in 2011, we had moved some of the budget from supporting some of our administrative support into increasing our funding for our academic and our student support. That equated to about $4.6 million. So we wanted to just kind of establish that in the beginning of the report. Next, just looking at our current position and some of the goals and objectives, we wanted to just kind of reiterate what some of our current position was, looking at our enrollment trends, also how we're going to address the increase in health costs and our tuition waivers. Next was the table. I just wanted to kind of go through a little explanation of this table. This is a summary of the changes that we are projecting for the next three years. There's three different scenarios. We have optimistic, base, and pessimistic scenario. Each scenario has a line item, and in the document, there's a section for each area that goes into detail of what we use to make those recommendations or those projections and gives more detail on each one of those items. One thing to remember about this section is that the changes that are shown in one year carry forward through the future years. So next, just looking at some of our revenue assumptions. For example, with student tuition, we took into account the relationship between our employment rate versus our enrollment rate to come up with some of these projections. Our optimistic looks at some of the documentation that we found on our National Center of Education Statistics that tells us what possible growth we could encounter in the next three years. Our base, assuming at an enrollment of flat, and then our pessimistic, if we happen to continue on a decline of enrollment. Then also looking at our distance learning, there was some indication that possibly in the future, we may be asked to eliminate our distance learning fees, so we wanted to take that into consideration as well in the three-year plan. Then towards the end of this section, it just reiterates some of the things that we're going to be looking at within the year and the upcoming years, some of the recommendations and how we could possibly increase our revenue for our tuition, also looking at exploring auxiliary revenue, and then how we're going to continue to implement processes to be more efficient, to look at saving money and going forward. Now I'm going to hand it over to Amy, and she will discuss the additional financial information.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Law. We're going to start with investments. The college has a written investment policy in accordance with Florida statutes. We have three major classes, and on the chart shows our investment earnings over the last three years. We're projecting that those investment earnings will remain flat for this fiscal year. Below the chart is also the current balances as of September 30th of our investment accounts. The next section of the report addresses our auxiliary activities. Auxiliary activities are those that are provided by non-instructional services such as commissions from our bookstore. We also have our college leases, which is certain space that we lease out to other organizations. The chart reflects both the revenue trends for the last fiscal years, which are remaining flat, and are projected to remain flat for this fiscal year. We are actively investigating auxiliary options for this year and how to grow our auxiliary revenue in the coming fiscal years. The next section is on capital construction. We received three major sources of funding for our capital construction, Public Capital Outlay, or PICO. PICO is some of the digits allocation, or as we affectionately know, is soda, and the student capital improvement fees, SIF. The college has two major projects going right now, of course, the St. Petersburg Student Success Building and the Clearwater Library. The $9.3 million that's listed here by the Clearwater Library will be funded with SIF, and that is our college portion. Looking in the years beyond, we're looking to build, to build a health education campus for approximately $50 to $60 million, which will be constructed in phases, and also an academic student learning support center in downtown for $1.7 million. The next section is on our waivers. This chart is separated into two categories, the college discretionary waivers and the statutorily required waivers. The fiscal year 1617 projected amount is based on our fall 2016 enrollment.
Hang on, I want to talk about that, that slide a little bit. So we have college discretionary waivers that have to do with athletics and those sorts of things. And while it's gone up, I don't think we'd be hitting the 911 switch for $140,000. We could manage that. Look at the statutorily required pieces. That has gone up almost a million and a half dollars over a period of time. And we have no ability to say no to any of those, of those folks when they present themselves. You know, and for each of them, I can speak with, with great, heartwarming support for why we do what we do. But you wake up one day and the legislature has passed to us a million and a half worth of additional non-revenue commitments that we make. And that's why we're doing a three-year plan. We have to get our arms around this particular piece as one of the key portions of our annual budget. But I'll be honest, I was quite surprised when we, when we got to, what, $2.3 million last year on June 30th. That was more than I had anticipated we would have.
What's DCEA?
Department of Children and Families, Foster, the foster children.
Okay.
Those are the immigrant students who, who now can come for in-state tuition to the college, except we pay the out-of-state portion of, of those students. Yeah, that was, you know, and you see, it went, we didn't have it in 1314, it went from 12, from 440,000, and now it's half a million bucks. So they're wonderful students, we want them, they, we supported that bill, and then we got the bill for it.
When you say we are, my understanding of that is, is that they are entitled to in-state tuition?
Right.
Why are we, are we paying ourselves the out-of-state, maybe I don't understand? Where's the shuffle?
We waived the out-of-state tuition, so we don't collect that out-of-state tuition.
No, I thought you were saying we paid it, and I was going to say, so it's just not leaving the house, is what, it's not coming into the house and it's not leaving the house.
That's correct. Anyway, this is one of the areas that I think we have to get, this one requires attention on all of our part, and we'll bring a recommendation on all of this.
The next section is health insurance. This chart depicts the actual cash coming into our payroll account from our premiums from the college as well as the employee, and going out for claims, administrative fees, and our stop loss. Currently, as of October 31st, we have a cash balance in this account at $6.1 million. The next section is our net assets or our net position. The chart depicts the unrestricted fund balance, which is for funds one and three. As of, as of June 30th, 2016, our unrestricted net, net balance is $21 million. Now, you might look down on that chart, and it might give you some pause, that you see a net unrestricted balance of thirty, deficit of 34 million. This is due to the new GASP-68 requirement. And that, that requirement is that we carry a portion of our retirement liability on our books, even though we are a member of FRS, and that liability will be paid out by FRS.
So that 38.7 goes away?
Correct. That is, it's, we have to record it on our books for compliance, but it is paid out through Florida Retirement System.
So that leaves us at a four, four and change.
Madam Chair, why are we required to carry it on the books again?
GASP-68, sir, that's a compliance issue with governmental standing accounting support.
Accounting. Yeah, those things.
So we're going from 14, so you can see when, obviously, it got implemented in 14.
Correct.
That's a big decrease, though, from 14 to seven.
And the last, if there's any more, is there any more questions on this section? Okay. And then the last section is the long-term liabilities, and it's just a snapshot for you as of June 30th, where our long-term liabilities are and what our commitments are for this coming year. Is there any questions for any of us?
Madam Chair, members of the boards, we hope that we can engage a real thorough discussion at, at the planning workshop, because many of these things are going to require multi-year strategies to get them under control. There are two, three things that, that jump out at me. One, you just saw the fee waivers, that one, we're going to have to figure out a strategy for that. The second, we woke up one day and, you know, we, we have always carried forward, you get to June 30th and not everything has been paid, so you kick those bills into the next year, and then you pay them next year. Standard business procedure, I think, certainly state business procedure. And you wake up one day and that number's a little bit bigger than you thought. We're kicking forward a little more than, than we had anticipated. So that, we have the money because on July 1, we're going to pay those, those bills when they come in. But I don't think that's a healthy thing. It's a moving hole in the budget of about $1.9 million now, and that's a significant problem for all of us to just see that float through. And I think we can get our arms around that with a little more diligent management of, of how we handle those issues. But what I want is a clear picture of what's available to us to make quality decisions on supporting faculty and staff. You know, one of the things you'll see in the chart, I, you know, I'm hoping we can give a pay raise next year. Don't ask me where the money's coming from, we keep a little tally sheet at, at the executive committee every week. When we save money, we jot down, okay, we saved 80 bucks, 80,000 bucks this month, we saved $243,000 with Dr. Cooper's last presentation. I just want the board to understand, we are fully invested in this, and we need, we need your best input on, on all of this.
At the December meeting, can we have a P&amp;L report that's already, you know, in line with what we have from a revenue and expense standpoint from the reports we're already getting, that kind of line items a few of these scenarios, just so we can see how these would lay out completely and in whole?
Madam Chair, also, Dr. Law, I like how we do our December strategy session. I think we may need to make it a little longer to discuss a couple, we have some real pressing issues, this is one of them, of course, and a couple of other things. But also, we need to have more time to discuss recruiting and how we're getting to these students, and because we're down. And I'd like to have a longer discussion to make sure that the board is actually giving clear direction on how we think we can help, and number one, and number two, you know, what are the real problems? I want to be able to really diagnose what the problem is as opposed to just, you know, going into our groups and then coming back to the, I want to be able to have more of a discussion. So maybe we need to spend a little more time this year than we have in the past on, on this, Madam Chair, if we could. And I'm not trying to hold people's schedules up, I mean, it's one day, and we're going to be a little longer than we normally are. And I think it's critical, though, for the health of the organization for us to have these discussions, so if folks could do that, I would, I would appreciate it.
I think that meeting is scheduled from 9 to 12, Deborah? You know, we could certainly go to mid-afternoon.
I mean, though, what I mean, though, is that the board has more time, because when we break out in our breakout sessions, they're going rapidly faster, I mean, they're going really fast. I mean, maybe we, we make it to 12:30 or 1, so that we have a little more time to have more discussion and not be so quick in our breakouts. And then when we come back together, we can have more of a discussion to kind of close it out.
I don't, I don't have any objection, I'll leave it to the board. I don't have any objection to setting it to two, bringing lunch, working through lunch, backgives everybody, and they feel like, I can tell you from a financial standpoint, I'd like, I'd like to drill down maybe a little harder than we normally do.
I'd just rather we give us, I would rather give us more time, Madam Chair. If we don't use it, that's fine. But people's schedules are blocked out for that time, so that if we do have, if we take longer, we have the opportunity to do exactly what you're saying, drilling down on some of these issues that are very critical to the organization.
So with that said, would going to 2 o'clock, would that ruin anybody's day or anything like that? I'm fine. With that said, I would ask that we move that from, set at 9 to 12, 9 to 2, and then bring in lunch, and we'll just do a working lunch. Anything else? We kind of interrupted you and hijacked your presentation, I'm sorry. We're good at that, though. It's one of our strengths. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Great job, thank you. And the only thing I would ask is, would you use email before, probably about a week or so before, I know we get our packages, what, a week before? I'd like that, I know it's still draft, but I'd like that within there, because that's pretty substantive.
Madam Chair, now, one of the things that, certainly if, if people want to dig in before the board meeting, if they would call our office, Vice President Miles and I'd be happy to sit down with you and walk through, make sure everybody's comfortable with whatever it is. I think an hour and, an hour and a half in your office would get everybody to a different level of understanding.
I definitely would like that, Dr. Law. And the other thing is, the reason why is because the expanding cost of the state burden, is burdening us with, we need to figure out a strategy going forward, and I'd like to see, that's one of the reasons I'd like for us to have more time to talk about what we can do as a board to help you with that, if it's, if it's going to Tallahassee, if it's reaching out to the folks that we know in the legislative process. But this is going to grow to an extent, we're not going to be able to take it on after a while, it's growing so big, so.
Thank you.
I don't see a presentation on the personnel report, is there any questions on the personnel report?
Move that we accept the personnel report, Madam Chair?
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Having a motion, a second, all in favor of accepting the personnel report?
Aye.
Aye.
Same on the stop-loss renewal, has everyone had an opportunity to take a look at that? And any questions?
Madam Chair, I move that we accept the stop-loss renewal.
And do I have a second? Having a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Jim, you are up.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Law. I am Jim Wrechter with your Facilities Department, and thank you for a few minutes of your time this morning to go through some of our recently completed and currently under construction projects. This is a photograph of the New Student Success Center that was recently renovated in the U P building right here on this campus. Provost Strickland would love to have the opportunity to take any of you through that center who have not yet seen it. We're also represented today, A.D. Morgan Corporation is here, who delivered this project for us on time, on budget, at the August 1 deadline, so that we could open up in time for our peak registration period. It's a highly impactful space, very engaging, a reception desk that will absolutely blow you away, it's really, really impressive how the engagement has changed in that space. Again, we welcome the opportunity to take you through that after the meeting. Near the end of the last budget year, Provost Carver at the Health Education Center endeavored to spend his discretionary money, or some of it, on some additional student study spaces, small, small group study spaces, he had five that were being overused, and he needed more, so we added seven more small group study spaces in the library section of the Health Education Center. Nothing elaborate, but very, very functional, and these spaces are really, really popular with small group study, health education students. The Allstate Chiller Plant Project, after many, many years of planning, we finally got this project underway, we are completely replacing all the infrastructure at the chiller plant at the, at the Allstate Center. This is a photograph of one of the, one of three of the new chillers. If you've never seen a chiller, they're the size of a small automobile and about ten times the cost of one. This project is highly mechanically intensive, as you can imagine, but by the end of this calendar year, we'll be wrapping that project up. If you recall, this project was delivered to us via energy performance contracting, so the money was borrowed, the large part of the project, and will be repaid via the energy savings, the savings on the utility costs that will be derived from the much higher performing machines. Machines that were being replaced were original with the building when it was constructed by the Allstate Insurance Company back in the sixties, I believe, so they were in excess of fifty years old, and glad to have this project behind us.
So let me ask a question about that. So basically, what are we estimating our savings with the new?
The projection, it's a guaranteed savings, that's guaranteed by the deliverer, Johnson Controls did the project, they're expecting about a hundred thousand dollars per year savings in utility costs, and a large part of that money will go to repay the loan, over a twenty-year period, is how that works. The Bay Pine Stem Center is out of the ground, and we're making good progress on that project. This is a picture actually taken from what would be the parking lot. Lot of utility space underneath the building for storage of the kayaks and all of the other components that will be used for the outdoor learning component of the building. And this is a photograph from what will be the community room and/or the science labs directly adjacent to the community room, looking eastward over the bayou there. We've got, obviously, a lot of work to do, but what you're looking at will be actually full, full-height glass components, and a really, really impressive facility. We're getting really excited about this, this project. We have substantial completion scheduled for March, and we'll be in that building by about May. The PICO, this is a PICO project, four point eight million dollars, we are squeezing every dollar out of that budget to make this, make this project come to fruition. This is a photograph of the Clearwater Library that was taken last Wednesday afternoon. Forty-four thousand square foot building, two stories, so what you're looking at is a twenty-two thousand square foot footprint, that was taken last Wednesday afternoon. Before the sun came up Thursday, over a hundred yards of concrete had already been deposited onto the site, and by the end of that day, the entire slab was completed, three hundred and fifty-five yards, cubic yards of concrete that comprised the slab. So that's what the building looks like now. Very quickly now, you'll start to see the vertical walls be erected, so you'll see some tangible, out-of-the-ground progress on that project. It's moving along really well. Creative's doing a great job up there. We have substantial completion for the college in this fall, or next fall, I should say, and then we will do some demolition, construct some parking spaces and so on for the city, and then they'll be in there the spring of 2018. As you know, it's a joint-use library, the colleges share nine point three million of the fifteen million dollar budget, city shares five point seven. Those numbers are very commensurate with the portion of square footages that we each will occupy. St. Pete Gibbs Student Success Center. At the good guidance of this board, in May, you instructed us to engage the early phases with some of our small contractors while we were going through the selection phase for the design builder. All of that has happened. We now have Lima Construction under contract for the design-build portion of the new construction and the renovation of what will remain of the existing admin building. Simultaneously, we've been engaged, in the left-hand photo, removing some of the salvageable items, getting rid of the containing contaminants in the building, constructing, the right-hand photo, constructing a new wall, will it separate the old portion from the new portion, or the old portion from the portion to be demolished. Yesterday morning, we actually started the demolition phase of the project. Student Success Center at St. Pete Gibbs, initial phase of demolition is underway. It looks very different even this morning, a lot of progress on that, just in the last twenty-four hours. So if you drive down 66th Street, it will look very, very different today. As I mentioned, two things going on, demolition and utility relocation with our small contractors, while we're getting ready, we're getting started, getting these meetings scheduled with our design-build partner. Those, that design phase will be going on in earnest this spring, construction will take about twelve months. As you also know, the total budget of twenty-five million, the twenty million PICO ask is halfway secured, the ten million we have, the second ten million, we're going to ask the legislature for this year, and these photographs will make their way to Tallahassee very quickly here, so that we can get them in the hands of the legislative delegation, a five million dollar college match to go along with that. Are there any questions?
Any, any questions from the board?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks. Madam Chairman, members of the board, the collective bargaining update, there are just two very important things. First is the, all of the seven campus-based meetings have been held. I met with invited faculty on each of the campuses, one-on-one. Kind of a mixed bag of who attended, some were firmly for the union, some were firmly against the union. We provided, I think I provided under separate cover, my letter to the faculty, to all of you, it was in a Friday packet a couple weeks ago. There's another document that we handed out at the, at the meetings, which was the FAQs. This came from our college attorneys, and again, our, our goal in these meetings was to document as, as, fully as we could, what the impact of a decision to vote in favor of collective bargaining would mean, and we walked everybody through whatever questions they had regarding all of those kinds of things. The meeting to determine who's in the bargaining unit has been rescheduled for December 1st. We have met on two very long work sessions with, with our attorney to document our position that the librarians nor the advisors need to be included in the faculty bargaining unit, so we've carefully documented how that case would work. As best I understand, PERC will provide a hearing officer, both sides will make their best case, and then PERC will issue a ruling sometime subsequent to December 1st. No idea what, how that ruling will come out. So we are, we're moving forward, you know, as I have cautioned everybody, this is a slow-moving process, do not expend all your energy on day one, because there's a long way to the finish line for everyone. If there are questions, I'm happy to have them, I, I'm.
I do, Dr. Law, I'm interested to know, what was the main reason for wanting to have a union? Did you get, did you ever get to that?
I, I still don't know the answer to that question. That came up at several of the meetings with, with those who are against it, saying, would somebody describe exactly what, what that is? I will tell you, there's, there are any number of, you know, well, would it mean this, would it mean that, would it mean this? I'm still at a loss as to what the incident cause is. I, you know, I'm gonna speak plenty, I think all of us are, the part I couldn't dispel in, in good conscience was some of the activities that have taken place in colleges around us. Our friends at Manatee did some things that I, you know, I don't think this board would, would see itself doing, and, and yet that still resonates with faculty an awful lot. Are, are we subject to that kind of board activity coming out of the blue and all of that? And certainly, as, you know, this board has, I haven't been shy saying, this is the finest board I have worked with. The board doesn't talk nasty about faculty in, in open meetings, they don't talk nasty about faculty behind the scenes, they support everything that, that we have asked for in, on behalf of faculty, so it's, it's a little bit embarrassing, Mr. Gibbons, to not be able to tell you what the incident cause is, but.
Well, I mean, if we're being held accountable for something that happens at Manatee, then maybe we should look at some of their actions, and, I mean, because I don't understand, I thought that we were doing a very good job with, with faculty and staff in terms of, you know, because I'm the first person to stand up if there is, if there is a discrepancy in salary, or we're, we're trying to give raises, I'm the very first person to speak up for that, and I, and the rest of these folks on the board, as far as I know, have done everything they can to accommodate faculty and try to be fair and equitable. And, you know, this kind of, I mean, I have to tell you, it's just like slap in the face to me personally, as a board member, when people are out forming, I'd like for them to come here and tell us why they want to form a union. I really would, I'd like for whoever's in charge of this, I'm asking, Dr. Law's not asking, I'm asking, for the whoever's in charge of this, or who wants, whoever wants to have a union, come tell me why. I would like to know, because, you know, if there's something that we're not doing, tell me, don't just blindside me, I mean, you, I understand what you're saying, you're saying, people are saying, you know, what happened at Manatee and other colleges around us, well, we're not Manatee, this is S B C. And I think we've done a darn good job of trying to protect our employees and making sure they have the necessary tools, salary, and other things to do a good and capable job. And this kind of ticks me off a little bit, to be honest with you, I'm, you know, I feel like I've been slapped in the face, because I've been ardent and strident, trying to make sure that I do what's right in terms of our employees and our faculty and staff, and I get in the fights with Dr. Law all the time, I'll say that on this desk, about things that I disagree with, and, and this kind of makes me a little upset, Dr. Law, I mean, because, you know, I try to fight for what I think is right, I try to do what I think is right, and then I'd like for them to come tell the board why they want to have a union. Not that I'm totally against unions, but I, this is, you know, why do we need another bargaining unit? I don't understand that. You know, if it's necessary, come tell me, and let me, let me just, you know, let me make my own decision, but I haven't had anybody come here. You know, it's kind of like moving in the dark, it's like, it's in the shadows. I keep hearing about this union, I keep hearing about everybody going around to the employees, but nobody will come to the board. Come to me, come face up to the board, tell us why you need a union. Tell us, whoever that is, Dr. Law, whoever's in charge of this, you tell them that I sent that mandate out, I want to know personally, so come to the board next month, or the month after, whenever we can get it scheduled, they can even come to the meeting next month in December if they'd like, but I'm, I'm curious to hear why they want a union.
You got a workshop next month?
Huh?
You got a workshop next month?
Next month, I know, even if they want to come to the workshop, that's fine. I want to know, though, I want to hear this. You know, I, I hate to say that I'm the longest-serving member up here, but I think I've heard, I've, I've done a pretty good job of making sure that I listen to people when they come to me, and nobody's come to me about the union, everybody's moved around. I ask Dr. Law, every month, I've asked you, what's going on with the union, haven't I, Dr. Law?
Yes, absolutely.
Every month, I've asked that question, but yet, no one from the union side has come here to say why they want a union. Nobody. That's not fair to the board, nor is it fair to the employees who may, may not want to be in the union. So please come and tell us why you want a union. Maybe you changed my mind, I'm not sure, but I feel like it's, you know, it's a slap in my face that you won't even come tell us why you want a union. And nobody's been here to say, here's why we need a union. So, sorry, Madam Chair, for the rant, but I hope that whoever gets the message and they come and they tell us whoever's over this. Who's the leader, Dr. Law, who's organizing the effort?
There's several, there's a.
Well, have all of them come, I'd like to hear all of them tell me why.
Any, any other comments or questions? Any other comments or questions? The only thing I. Go ahead, sir. The only thing I would say is, is that I had the opportunity to review the letter that went out to everyone, and granted, I am a less-is-more kind of girl, and that was not a less letter, but I will say this, I read every word, and I was very, very proud of the work, and I've only been on this board a very short time, but I was very, very proud to be part of this organization after reading that letter, and I read every word. So with that said, maybe, maybe not as passionately as Devron, but I would reiterate Devron's thoughts. You're the only one left.
Fourth.
Okay. With that said, I'm going to quickly move us on to, back to Dr. Cooper.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Law, it is my pleasure to bring forward our recommendations for faculty and academic chair positions for the 2017, 2018 academic year. First of all, I want to begin by thanking you. The deans and I are very proud, as has been noted, for the support of our faculty. We have a number of requests this year, sixteen in total, some due to retirements, resignations, promotions, we had an academic chair that wanted to return to a faculty position, we've had some programs that have experienced growth, and so they are asking for new positions, and we've also have two positions that we didn't fill last year. So out of those total of sixteen requests, we are recommending that we hold six, four of these are replacement positions, that we don't have a need to replace at this time, and two of the new positions, we'd like to revisit next year. So we're recommending that we fill ten of the positions. Various factors are looked at before we bring these recommendations forward, we, of course, begin with the full-time adjunct ratio, this is the amount of student semester hours that are taught by our full-time versus our adjuncts, and our goal is to keep that at a ratio of fifty-five to forty-five. We also look at programs that are growing and expanding in regards to their enrollment, we look at the graduation rates of the program, the fill ratios of their classes, and we also look at the amount of student impact. If a program is very small, and is gonna impact a smaller number of students than a large program, we may go forward with the large program and hold on the smaller one for the time being. All of those things taken into consideration in regards to the budgetary impact of those ten positions, when we look at the changes in the positions that we're holding, which are already in the budget, it comes down at a savings of about almost two hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars to fill those ten positions. Just want to also reiterate the extent in the hiring process that we go through, we begin by, first of all, once positions are approved to fill, then we'll look at the diversity information within the discipline. We then have faculty through FGO recommended to serve on the search and screen committees along with the deans, we make sure that those are diverse as well. Then the applicants are reviewed by the search and screen committee, they submit five to six recommendations to the dean, who then accumulates all of those, and they come up with then the number of candidates that they're going to bring on campus to interview. Along with the interview, there will be a teaching demo, any. campus to interview. Along with the interview, there will be a teaching demo. Any faculty in the discipline are invited to be a part of that. The dean then, of course, conducts the final interview. They are also interviewed by the provost of the campus, that they'll be located on. And then finally, Dr. Law and I will interview the candidates as well. So it's a very thorough process before we bring someone on board. Are there any questions?
None for me. Any questions from the board? Saying none, thank you. I would entertain a motion to...
Second.
Having a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Moving on to the consent agenda. Is there anything anyone wants pulled off the consent agenda? Hearing none, I would accept a motion to accept the consent agenda.
So move.
Having a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. None opposed. Public access, I don't, informational reports, none, 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 none. Next meeting is...
I have a president's report.
Pardon?
President's report.
You have a president's report. You sure?
Yes, ma'am.
Not that I was trying to move quickly, but...
Madam Chairman.
To the president's report.
Members of the board, I am handing you a very brief statement. I would like to submit my, my resignation as president effective July 1 or June 30. I have only good feelings for the work that we've accomplished. For all of us, there is a time to, to move on. So my, you have my recommendation. I will serve as long as, as you deem within that, that timeframe. However you care to handle the matter, I am at your disposal, so.
Madam Chair, can you give him that letter back?
I'm about ready to. Well, this is a kicker to a first meeting.
Is there something she said?
Right, exactly. I was going to say, my goodness gracious.
Dr. Madam Chair, may I? Dr. Law, I don't, man, I know you've served a lot of years in a lot of places. I really, I really would ask you to take it back, the resignation, but I know when you make up your mind, you are, you are, you've made it up. And I'm sorry that you're leaving us. I really am. We have grown to be friends, brothers, partners in crime in a lot of situations, but you will be missed. I think you were the injection in the arm that we needed at the time that we needed it, Bill.
Thank you.
And we are a better college because you came here. I remember your interview here on this campus, and you promised us you were going to get certain things done.
Yeah.
With your wife sitting right over in the other building over there, and you've done that. You've been a strong, capable, knowledgeable leader of this, this college. I'm thrown for a loop, but as long as you're here to help us pick the next one, I think we'll be in good, in good shape. But you, listen, don't, don't retire now. Make it July.
July one.
All right? So that we got a lot more stuff to do. And I love you. I appreciate all that you've done.
Thank you.
You had me at hello. This is my 11th meeting as a member of the Board of Trustees. It's been an honor. But I, my association with St. Petersburg College and Dr. Law goes long before my service to this board. The partnerships that he has forged with people in the community, with cities, with other governments, those in, in the academic community, and really, as I've seen, taking this to a whole new level. I mean, Dr. Cutler was here for years. We went from St. Junior College to St. Petersburg College, and Dr. Cutler had left his legacy and, and large shoes to fill. But I'm going to attest, as a member of Pinellas County Community, that you, that you filled them, and you filled them in excess, and then some. And while Carl was able to take us to one level, I think that, that you've taken us into, into new, new fields and new generations that we're going to serve. And, so yeah, I'm, I'm a little at a loss for words. I didn't see that coming. And I'm sure you and I will talk privately, and, and I wish you certainly the best in whatever endeavor you choose. But yeah, this, this is a little kind of a kick in the gut right now.
Two meetings in a row with surprises for me. Of course, I agree with what's been said already, Dr. Law. I, I only wish you and I had had more time to work together. I look forward to the next few months. One of the reasons I was so excited about this role as a Board of Trustee was to work with you specifically. Your reputation far preceded you, and you've done great things for this institution, for the students here, more importantly, I think, for this region, for this part of the state of Florida. St. Pete College has an outstanding reputation, and we thank you for that. And I'm sure we will all move forward. We will, we will miss you, but we will build upon what you've created and the foundation I think we have here now. And you'll be missed.
Thank you.
I guess I will finish this off with, I'm not the sensitive one up here. And when I first joined this board, I didn't know what I was getting myself into. And I have become so proud, as I like to say, SPC proud, of being a part of this organization, and I can tell you that so much of that is because of you. With that said, we got union issues, we got money issues. We, we got things to handle in the next six months, and we got to find a new leader. I don't know the process, candidly, of how to handle this. So if we can get together offline, and I would, would like to, but I, I can't begin to tell you how grateful that I am that I've gotten to be part of this while you've been here.
Madam Chair, I don't know what the protocol is for St. Pete, St. Peter for college. I certainly know what it was in government. But as for me, I mean, this is going to get some media attention. This is going to get some press. I'm going to choose not to, or elect not to, not to speak, but I'll direct all media request to you as chair. You can speak for me, and I would appreciate that.
You sure?
Well...
A little more open.
And so that's, that's just me, but...
I think that is a good rule for the board. I think you're right.
You're, you're our chair, and you will, your eloquence will, will speak well.
What about eloquence?
Madam Chair, I, I, before we leave, though, I just would like to give a, a hand to a job well done. Thank you, Dr. Law.
Well, I'm finishing off. My first meeting is Board Chair crying, which is outstanding. With that said, next meeting is December 13. We're going to go to 2:00 p.m. And do I have a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
I'll move.
Do I have a second? All in favor? Aye. We are adjourned. That's a kick.